So, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the Joint School Committee to order. Since tonight is a reorganization evening, we don't yet have a chair, so I'm opening. However, we do need a chair and a secretary, and generally that rotates. Last year, Henry was the chair from Dover, so I would take a nomination for a chair from Sherburne for this year.
I would nominate Angie Johnson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, take over, Angie. I don't have the gavel, but I don't think you need it.
No, we don't need one. So, first of all, we have the Union 50. Oh, that's us for that. So, second of all, we have your agenda, however...
We still need a vice chair.
We still need a vice chair. I thought we said secretary, she says.
Secretary, sorry.
So, we need a nomination for a secretary, and I would like to nominate Henry. Well, this has looked out great. And Les Brok wants to do both. Come sit, Kate.
Is...
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so now we can get down to business. So, in your agenda, as it stated, we would like to kind of go a little out of order, if that's okay. So, if you'll look at number six, the item review is curriculum review, and we would like to move that up under community comments, so that would be number four. So, we'll kind of shift everything down if everyone's okay with that. We just wanted to go ahead and get some things presented, so this other matter can get on the way. So, is that okay with anybody? Everybody? Okay. All right, so next, we have community comments. So, anyone from the community, if you'll just state your name and address and stand on up.
My name is John Higley. I'm chairman of the Sherburne Planning Board, and we'd like to present some copies of the new Sherburne master plan and get on your agenda to go through it. There's some key things about forecasting. The plan is broken into several sections, and the financial and economics section has some action items with implementation assignments and things like that. There's several things that are in the plan about curriculum and communication with you folks. And also, as I mentioned, the forecasting for the school uses for school population, we'd like to make sure that the potential for a disruption in the normal forecasting method that includes large developments, in particular in Sherburne, in our master plan, in our housing production plan, we've got some large developments. And we have a meeting next week with one of the developers and things like that. But there's a potential for a few hundred new homes, that some of them could be putting a burden on your budgeting and forecasting that are probably not in your normal forecasting based on what you see at the elementary schools.
Okay.
So, we'd like to get a chance to distribute. We have a few here for the superintendent's office and for the chair, and then it's online, and we can get other copies to anybody that needs them.
And I got one last night, so anyone who did not get one, and I'm going to pass mine through once I've finished reading it, which I started on it, so...
And we'll look for a book report.
Exactly. I think it's going to be interesting with all the changes, but I know probably Ann would need one. Mrs. Hovey?
Yeah, I need one. If people read through this and they have questions, who should they contact?
Well, it depends on what the question is, but I always volunteer the planning board in Sherburne, and the planning board, with any master plan in the state, the planning board's responsible for the final approval of the plan. It's been presented throughout the town and acknowledged at our town meeting and things like that. But that's... So, you can certainly address me, I'm the chairman, John Higley, and our town planner, Gino Carlucci. I'll also say that Marion Neutra is the chief editor and principal author, I would say. There are a ton of people that put effort into this, but you can certainly contact us. So, let me...
And it may be beneficial for one of our Dover counterparts to have it as well...
Thank you.
As it would go through the region at some point.
Well, why don't I...
Yeah.
So, we have four copies here.
Just set, give one to...
I need...
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I want to just leave these with you.
That'd be great. And then we'll just disperse them at the end. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you, Marion, again for coming.
And you said extra copies are available?
Yep, yep, and it's also online. The online version allows you to search.
For those who...
We're online.
Yeah, yeah.
Michael.
I think you should take a copy, because you like to delve into the detail. I nominate.
There's a section called Planning Documents. You can see a tab that says Planning Documents, and it's right there.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it's a lot of reading, it's a lot of changing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If possible, if I could make one community comment as well. Michael Lee Sherburne, and former regional school committee member. Greg and I worked quite extensively on the economics section of the plan, and I would encourage you guys in preparation, whoever's on the committee for negotiations next year, to look that over. I think Marion has done an excellent job of taking what would be 20 pages of my Gottlieb book and synthesizing it down to two or three pages of, these are the issues, the opportunities, and also the challenges that the town of Sherburne is facing over the lifespan of this town master plan, and I think it's directly relevant to the critical issues that play out in a negotiation with your various union and other negotiating groups.
Okay.
Actually, I'd like to make a quick comment as well. It occurred to me, looking through the plan, thinking about this group, that there's a wealth of potential student community service projects in the recommendations of this plan. So, I don't know who is responsible for that program, but I'm sure you do, either at the middle school and/or the high school. So, whoever is, I would encourage you to take a look through and maybe encourage students, at least the Sherburne students, to get to know that plan a little bit and look for potential community projects.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that is a great idea. All right, well, thank you all very much for coming, your comment. So, next, we're going to move on to the curriculum review, so we can see what we need to do.
Okay, so we have actually two different curricular topics tonight. We have mathematics, because this was the year for the mathematics curriculum review, and then we have a FLEX program, because as you know, our cohort of FLEX students are moving up to the region in August. We're going to do math first. I could talk about this all day, so I will try to be brief and to the point, and then if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to either answer them tonight or in a private meeting. So, mathematics, K through 12. So, every year, we take a deep dive into one of our curriculum areas in order to evaluate, develop, and implement all curricula to ensure alignment to the Dover Sherburne mission, which is to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential. So, this year, being math, we had our math leaders from Chickering, Pine Hill Middle School and High School working together to evaluate our math program. Last year, you'll remember, was English. This year is math, next year is history, in case you want to get caught up on the history standards between now and then. So, first, we develop a vision, and then from that vision, we conduct a self-study to see to what degree we're meeting that mission. We want to make sure that we're aligned with the frameworks. We ask for feedback from the community, which includes teachers, parents, and students. We analyze the data that's readily available to us in math, and then we create an action plan for the next five years of what's next in the department for us as we move closer and closer to that vision. So, what is the vision for the math department? This was created not only by our own faculty, but the National Council of Teachers of Math has standards, as well as MEAS, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and SSUG, which is the National Study of School Evaluation Guidelines. So, all of those things came together to develop this vision. So, for the program, our goal is obviously to make sure that all of our students graduate mathematically proficient, and that we have high expectations for all students. We want our curriculum to be aligned across all courses, really focusing on transferable skills and enduring understandings that not only are going to meet their needs in that math class, but also transfer to other contents and to life after Dover Sherburne. Instruction, we want it to be differentiated, to meet the needs of the various types of learners in front of our teachers, and to really start to transition towards student-centered instruction, as you know, has been a focus point from the Innovation Committee. Assessments, we want to be formative, so students have a lot of opportunity to practice and get feedback before they're asked to do the final test drive. We want the assessments to be authentic, yes, some paper and pencil, but also practicing the skills that mathematicians use in real life, and we want to make sure that our assessments are not just rote memory tasks, but also measuring critical thinking and problem-solving skills. So, that's the goal. We also want to make sure that these mathematical practices are being implemented in the classroom every day. These are put forward by the state of Massachusetts, along with the curricular content standards, and as you've heard from the Innovation Committee presentation, it's really not about what you know, but it's about what you do with what you know, and so the goal is for our teachers to be making sure that the students are practicing these skills every day in addition to using the content. So, we conducted a self-study. We looked at our curriculum, our instructional time, the data that we use to make decisions from day to day. We looked at our RTI, or otherwise known as MTSS, System of Interventions, our leadership structure, and professional development. So, the curriculum, K through 5 of both schools, is now in its third year of everyday math for, and has, for the most part, positive feelings about it. Grade six uses the Mabra Hill Math Series, grade seven and eight Glencoe, and grades nine through 12, there are so many courses and offerings, it really depends on the course, and if you're interested in which book they're using, it's all available on the website, and I can provide that for you as well. Instructional time, you're looking at nearly 60 minutes a day at the elementary level, 50 to 55 minutes at the middle school level, and then the high school level. Because of the rotating schedule, it's more on a weekly basis, but you're 57 minutes times X many times a week. Assessments, at the elementary level, they have pre-assessments and post-assessments for every unit with the everyday math series that they're using, and those assessments are nice, because they give students an opportunity to realize what it is that they're supposed to learn during the unit, learn the material, take a formative assessment, and then look at their results and decide, I have learned this, or I haven't learned this yet, and I need to go back and practice. So, it's really putting the students at the center of the learning to take ownership of meeting the standards. Grade seven, eight, and nine through 12 have made a lot of progress. They have definitely midterm and final exams that are common across courses, and in some cases, they also have common unit tests and quizzes that are the same, and therefore, when the teachers get together, the Algebra I teachers, the geometry teachers, they can look at their assessment data and share practices and strategies based on how all of the kids are doing in that course. So, we have the common assessment data to look at. We also have EAMS Web that we use at Chickering. The middle school has placement tests from year to year and can rely on MCAS scores for some pieces of information, and obviously Common Assessments at the high school level, as well as our standardized tests that we still continue to rely on. So, our Systems of Intervention. At the elementary level, we have small group instruction that happens both within the classroom and as a pull-out mechanism. We have special educators and interventionists going in and out of the classrooms at all times, and at the elementary level, it's much more of a workshop model for mathematics, where students are working in small groups, either with the teacher or independently, to learn the material and practice the material. Chickering, for a long time, has had the intervention block, where students can get an extra dose of math or whatever they need. And Pine Hill next year will have the WIN block, which is similar, the What I Need block, and both Deb and Allison at both schools have been working very closely to align the schedules between the schools and really look at the intervention strategies, so that mathematics is all being taught at the same time at grade three in a school, so that teachers can swap kids based on needs and skills, and interventionists and EAs can make themselves available at those times. The middle school, there's small group instruction happening in the classrooms as needed, again, from support from our special educators. We also have the small group class, that students, in addition to their Gen Ed math class, will meet in their small group class every other day to review, preview, practice, brush up on skills, and the teachers offer extra help sessions after school. At the high school level, there's small group instruction for students who qualify for such, and the teachers make themselves available after school for extra help as well. Leadership, we have our curriculum leaders and department heads across schools, as well as our building leaders, who drive the instruction there. In terms of aligning our curriculum to make sure we're covering what we need to cover, we do a very good job, K through 12, of covering the Massachusetts standards. There's no doubt that we do the math standards and beyond. So, we have our frameworks that are lined up, K through 12. Every course has the Understanding by Design curriculum maps that are laid out, that talks about the enduring understandings, the essential questions, what students need to know and be able to do, and the activities involved in the lesson. And these are currently housed in Aspen, but we're starting to put them out in Google so that they're more accessible and become living documents that can be updated over time. Vertical alignment, again, grade, the mathematics department has really made sure that students are prepared from one grade to the next, whether it's kindergarten to first or eighth to ninth. The high school department has a very complex system of courses, as you know, and this is available on their website, and you can click on any of these courses and access their syllabi and the course maps. We sent a survey out to teachers, including mathematics teachers, special educators, and ELL teachers. We sent a survey to students in fifth grade and then sixth through 12, and then parents across all four schools, and you'll see the numbers of participants there. In terms of feedback, we looked at the strengths and the areas for growth at each of the schools. So, again, you're going to see that there are definitely clear standards and great alignment, rich vocabulary, great instructional materials, areas for growth across all four schools are very similar, and the needs to differentiate for the needs of various learners, look at data to help us do that, share best practices, and come up with interventions, both within the Gen Ed classroom, but also small groups of kids, and who can provide those and when, and then the kids can receive more individualized help. Pine Hill, again, very similar. Differentiation, more time for teacher collaboration, data question and analysis, and interest in exploring project-based learning. Middle school, similar differentiation, collaboration, small group instruction, a variety of assessments, project-based learning are all areas for growth, and again, we can really rely on the fact that we're meeting the standards and frameworks, we have clear expectations, and the students can move from one level to the next, kind of seamlessly, content-wise. High school, again, very similar. So, you're seeing a theme here around differentiated instruction, looking at data, and then as the Innovation Committee starts to rule out the portion of a graduate, you know, once we get the differentiation under control, then starting to look about the creativity and innovation of real-world problem solving that we can add to that. Data, right now, we rely on the ones in the left, which is traditional test data from Common Assessments, MCAS data, and standardized exams that are in the college preparatory realm. What we'd like to move towards in the future are more performance-based tasks, standards-based criteria, so students can do this, and we can measure them against those can-do statements, and also looking at student growth versus just achievement. So, MCAS scores, we rely on SAT scores, advanced placement, but again, we'd like to make our measure of success a little wider and broader than that over time. So, action plan moving forward, we have our strategic plan, which I know you all know by heart, and many of the components in there are related to teaching and learning specifically around these things that teachers and parents and students identified as needs in mathematics, including student-centered instruction, self-trimming independent learning, authentic assessments, formatted data, those soft skills, those 21st century skills, and making sure kids are practicing those in the classroom, and Tier Two intervention. So, the strategic plan mirrors what the community said, and the community mirrors what the strategic plan says, so that's good news, that we're all heading in the same direction. So, Chickering has its plan for the next few years. Then, small group interventions, looking at student work, analyzing data. Pine Hill, data, feedback, collaboration, project-based learning. Middle school, the middle school is interested in looking at power standards, which are basically taking all 100 standards that you're supposed to cover in the year and identifying those that any student absolutely has to master by the time that they leave a grade level. Those are helpful, both when students are absent from school for a period of time, and they come back to school and they can't possibly make up every assignment that they missed, teachers know what to focus in on. But it also allows teachers to say, these are really the important ones, so instead of covering them all kind of well, let's take these 30 and take deep dives into them, and that's when you can do your authentic assessments and your project-based learning tasks, because you're kind of saying, these are more important than others. Which leads to the second one, a deeper learning, relevant tasks, authentic assessments. There's also really an interest at the middle school level of making sure that students maintain their curiosity and love of learning that they have coming out of elementary school, so really focusing on that. And at the high school moving forward, priority for next year, they are going to explore the addition of a financial literacy elective for students, which is very exciting. They're looking to add one project in every course. They want a math lab for support, so students can access content, expertise, and support in the math building, in addition to their special educators, who may or may not have the math expertise, and looking at subgroup data to make sure that all students are being supported in the math department, and then also talking to our graduates about, how did we do? And that's it? Questions? Yes?
I love the financial. But I still think that's awesome, because that ties into my question, it's going to be, is there any thought about expanding the definition of math?
Yes, we actually just had that conversation today. I met with Ann and John and Jim, and there's a conversation about how many years are required by the state, how many years are required by the college, of course, it depends on the college, and how can we, in this world of STEM, start to look at computer science and engineering as possibilities? So, they're all on the table, and I'm hopeful that the department chairs and academic standards committee will start to make some revisions and changes.
Did you talk about entrepreneurship and business financial literacy at all?
A little bit. So, the state now has frameworks around financial literacy and economics that are supposed to be embedded in math and history for every student, so every student's going to get the basics leaving school, and then we're talking about electives on top of that, where students can take a deeper dive.
But in those areas, as well as the personal financial literacy?
Yes.
That would be awesome.
In terms of the pieces, the softer pieces, like problem solving and creativity and developing a curiosity and love of math and of learning, are those things that would be fostered through electives or through classroom instruction, or...
Hoping classroom instruction.
Great.
Yeah, we really want to bring it to the six and a half hours that kids have every day versus the electives or their after-school activities.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, you ready to change to Spanish? Yes.
Back off.
All right. All right, so Laura and Barb, our Pine Hill and Chickering principals, who have been here through the development of the FLEX program and the inception of the FLEX program, we're going to present tonight. However, Barb had an accident today. She's okay, but she's recovering, and Laura, I'm sure, is on her way, so this is what you call speaking on the floor. And luckily, Laura Romer is back. Here she is, six years later, folks. If you're listening, if you don't know, she's moving to the middle school with this cohort of kids, so she's going to continue the FLEX program up. And Lady Klein is our curriculum leader at the middle school, who is happily receiving Laura and these kids and making great preparations. So, here we are, six years later. Okay, so, Link?
Should I start? Okay, I wasn't ready to speak in public, but anyway, I do my best. So, we started six years ago, and our goal was to provide a program where the kids could learn a language and be functional in the language, so be able to apply their skills in today's world, in a real situation. That's what we call proficiency in languages. So, by the end of the elementary school, our vision was to have students at the novice high level, which means that students can create with a language at a sentence level, and they can function and solve problems in familiar situations. So, they can have a conversation over familiar situations, familiar topics. So, in class, we created an immersion environment. This is not an immersion program, but yes, we speak the target language pretty much, I would say 99% of the time, rare exceptions on where we use English. We also try to align with a generic curriculum, so kids have background knowledge that they can apply and make connections with our program. We are culturally oriented, so basically, all the program is based on cultures, and it's not just Hispanic cultures. We go around the world a lot, doing comparisons and contrasting different cultures, so they can develop those cultural responsive skills that we are looking for nowadays. And it's an interactive learning. So, the classroom is not teacher-centered, it's pretty much project-based learning, and all the kids have the opportunity to present and use their skill by big presentations in front of classmates and an unknown audience.
I just realized, I don't know if I have sound.
So, what you are going to see now is, since kindergarten, we introduced the calendar, which is not just what the weather is like or what day it is today, it's about math, numbers, make connections, which will happen in the North Hemisphere, the South Hemisphere, and as soon as the kids are ready, which I would say kindergarten, we start in September by October, they are on their own doing the calendar. So, they take over leading the calendar experience.
Okay, so, we're going to try this. I'm not sure what the sound is going to be like.
So, that's kindergarten, and it's around, I would say, I don't remember exactly. But let's say that we start in September, by October, November, they feel confident enough to go on and lead the classroom. So, we start developing those skills from kindergarten on, and it keeps going up the ladder.
The right one or the next one?
Yeah, I would go to the next one. Maybe it's a little too much on videos, but the idea is, this is just the beginning, and what we want is to create independent skills and allow them or create an environment where they feel safe enough to take risks and use the language. So, we try to provide a lot of opportunities, so they can speak, they can express opinions, they can disagree, and it's all about conversations between each other, conversations with the teacher, conversations with, at the time that we go to fifth grade, Pempos, in this case, Spain. We got it spoon in Spain, and they are exchanging with them letters. So, well, we are here on an interactive learning activity, where first graders are playing a game that is typical for... They keep doing that in fifth grade, believe me. Yeah, they keep asking for that game. So, how do we assess the students, and how do we evaluate if they are progressing, if they are really improving on their language skills? Well, there are three modes that we concentrate on. It's interpretive, which is how much they comprehend, how much they understand the language. The interpersonal, which is the last mode that... The interpersonal, which is the last mode that kids develop, because it's basically problem-solving in a situation with a partner or with another, anybody, or in a group. And presentational, which pretty much is rehearsed, it's like doing public speech, or simply writing a letter or answering questions. So interpretive and presentational are the first two modes that we can see how the students progress, and interpersonal, by fourth, fifth grade, we can have conversations on topics that sometimes are a little off their comfort zone. They can start applying skills by trying to make them think about other areas or other situations in real life. So this is a little book that the kids, they write, so they are using writing skills, interpretive skills, and then they use technology to put the books on, a notebook, and they record their voices. And it's all their own creation. I don't know, it's just a book. They create it, they take pictures, so they use technology, we're incorporating technology, and they record the voice, and then they love to hear it. They feel very important. So what do we expect from the kids? Well, it's all there. What we want is them to understand that we are all different, and that makes us stronger, to be empathetic, and try not to be reactive to things that they look different or sound different, and try to ask questions about it, as opposed as reacting. Improve their ability to analyze, to inquire, to ask questions, to be curious about cultures or people or traditions that they look very different to what they are used to with. And on top of that, use and apply their linguistic skills. I think it's all. So far, what we have is, in kindergarten, we have them taking Spanish four days a week for 20 minutes each day. First grade and second grade, they have it four times a week, 30 minutes each day. And from third grade on, it's three days a week, 40 minutes each day. And that was a little compromising solution to make able to fit all the big schedule that we have in elementary school. So pretty much they have 120 minutes per week. And by the end of the year, I didn't do my math, I wasn't prepared for this. The projections said, the experts say, that by the time that the kids are in kindergarten, in fifth grade, they should be on a novice high level.
Which they are.
And they are.
They took the Apple exam.
They took the Apple exam, the fifth graders, not everybody, but they did. And the majority are on the novice high, and I have to say that some of them are in intermediate low, which is the next level.
Reading and writing too, which was part of the goal.
So we are concentrating pretty much on overall skills, because writing is a higher level of skills, and it comes a little bit later, but it's happening. So we are in a good place.
Couple other shots of our students working.
Right, so we have different projects. First grade does a virtual trip to the Maya lands. Second grade does a virtual trip to all the South American countries and Spain. So they have to research, they have to create brochures, and they do a presentation in front of all of the parents. Third grade does a trip to Central America and Mexico, same sort of presentational project. Fourth grade works on a UNESCO project, which is a little more intellectual. They research issues around the world, they choose which ones are they going to work on at the beginning of the year, and they become ambassadors of the world, they present the issues, they present their solutions, and how do they plan to solve that. And fifth graders, they research people from Hispanic heritage or Hispanic people from the past, from the present, that made an impact on our society.
That leads us to sixth grade. So Miss Glenn takes over.
Yeah, so we are really excited, because Laura's program has given us such a springboard, not just for the Spanish kids entering, so we won't have beginning Spanish anymore. That's a little, but we have that at the high school, since there's no beginning French or Latin there. So we're used to handling people coming in with not getting necessarily their ideal situation, so that's just a bump that we have. But we are so excited to have these students who, even if they're picking French or Latin, it's such a springboard to have had six years of receptive skills, productive skills. It makes them so much more ready to learn, because we all have had the job as sixth-grade teachers, of teaching them what learning a language is, right? And they have, they're coming in with that. And that is huge, because we've had to start with some very basic building blocks in sixth grade, and teaching them the basic structures. And now they're coming in receptive, that it's going to be so easy to weave them in through what we call comprehensible input. And we are so excited. So what we've done so far is, Alison Von Roer, our eighth-grade Spanish teacher, is going to pick up a section of sixth with Laura. They've been working all year on coordination. We've been developing what we call language agnostic themes, so that even though French and Spanish might be at different levels, they'll be doing the same thematic units in each grade. We've been revamping, well, the sixth grade is pretty much going to be ready by September to just hit the ramp going, and then we're ready to move it into seventh and eighth grade. We have, what do they say, the French and Latin, we are just as excited to have them come up with everything they have and be able to compare. When you pick a new language up, you're not losing the old language, you're gaining. I mean, you can only gain by picking another language, so it's really, it's exciting.
Have you found that more fifth graders are choosing Spanish rather than French or Latin? Or is it still the same way it was?
No, it's pretty much the same. There was, last year was unusual for French being a little low and Latin being a little high. This year it's more sort of corrected, and it's back to more of a normal amount. A lot of kids, they've loved the Spanish, but they're excited about trying something new, and they know they can go back to Spanish at the high school if they want, you know, so there's nothing to be lost for trying a new language for three years. They might stick with it, they might not. Some kids are shy, and they think, you know, Latin's gonna be their safe haven for speaking. Doesn't always work out that way, but no, it's, we were concerned about that, for sure. And it just didn't turn out that way. We got really healthy numbers in both French and Spanish, and Latin as it's usual, two normal size sections, as I said, this year it was two really big sections, as you know. So, no, it all, it worked out pretty well, which is the history across other school districts where they've done this, and they've had multiple options, right? So.
Get a choice, they want to use it.
This is their first choice. And when, I went over to Pine Hill and Chikering with both the Spanish and French teachers. And that was one thing I emphasized, because this really, we have electives, but language is really your only choice, right? So exercise it, right? Use your choice. So, no, we're really excited. This has been a long time coming. We've been working with them for six years. So we're very excited.
Are there any, I know that there are some students who, based on their special education needs, don't take a language at the middle school. Does having had the FLESS program in place change that, or is that still a period where some students will take a break from taking a language?
Most likely they will take a break. Sometimes even before that, there'd be parents who would insist that they'll drop something else, or they will take a language anyway. It all evens out. It is different now that they will have a language, but at least they have something to go back to at the high school. They won't be, you know, completely, they have, they can start, it'll be the same, they can start Spanish or Chinese at the high school. It would be lovely to be able to do both, but with the schedule the way it is right now, it's going to remain that way, that the students who need the extra time in a small group setting will probably come through the language class.
However, the change in start times in the RTI committee over time might have an effect on that.
Yeah, we are looking ahead.
Look differently on how and when we provide services to students, and perhaps giving them more options for Latin.
Yeah, because it is a little more poignant now, when they've had six years. And, yeah, it does give you more of a pang than before. And that is one of the exciting things about the school start times, changing our schedules, that we can look creatively at delivery with those kinds of services.
Could you talk a little bit about potential challenges with kids coming into the district without prior language experience into the sixth grade? And also potential challenges with kids differentiated at the, I guess, sixth and seventh grade, moving through the system, where you'll have the grade lower with six years of kind of that experience.
Six years, it is a little.
Yeah, and kind of moving, you know, moving kind of that through the snake until it's consistent.
So that will move, as you say, through the snake. You know, we'll roto-root it through. And I think as far as people moving into the district, we've been dealing with that at the middle and high school forever, you know, because a lot of districts don't start in sixth grade, for instance. And so you have students coming in with, you know, they're given an option, they can start a language in seventh grade, and then sort of deal with it when they get to the high school. Are they gonna start Spanish new, or Chinese new, or work over the summer to stay with the language they came into? Same thing happens at the high school. We've had kids coming in with not adequate preparation in Latin or French, and so they have to make that choice. Are they gonna do the outside work, or are they gonna pick up a new language? So it's gonna be the same here with kids coming without the Spanish. They'll have in sixth grade the choice of picking two new languages, which will be new for everybody, or they can, oh, if they've had Spanish previously, we'll find ways to see if we can catch them up, but it's not gonna be easy. So just the way it's not easy at the high school and middle school if they move them somewhere else.
Do you foresee that there would be a greater disadvantage not having? I mean, clearly, you're going to, any of the kids coming through the system would have had six years of Spanish, even if they're starting a different language.
Yeah, I'll be able to answer that better in June, but it will be, there will be a common language that those students coming in will lack. But honestly, French and Latin, we are starting, you know, they assume, we assume they know no Latin, no French. Well, again, I'll be able to tell you better in June, and what a disadvantage that might be to the students who are really new to language. I can try to compare it to students who come in to one of our three languages with a background in another language versus the kids who don't. It's an advantage. How much it's, how much the disadvantage slows them down, I don't know yet.
What we found at the elementary level, as students moved in in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade into the FLESS program and had to jump right in with their classmates, didn't necessarily have an effect on their proficiency level at the end of fifth grade. In fact, their proficiency was sometimes better than other students who struggle in foreign language or in other areas as well.
There was an aptitude.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, the pace picks up a lot in middle school, so it would be, you know, that would increase, just as the pace is higher at the high school, you know? So that's a very interesting question.
You can come, my family can be your guinea pig. I have, I have a fifth grader who has been through the whole program with Laura, and then I have a sixth grader who missed the whole program. And then I have a ninth grader in honors Spanish, and a third grader just starting. So we have, like, and everybody does Spanish, but they're all, it's all, they're all completely different.
Yeah, but I think he's asking, like, so somebody coming new in sixth grade is gonna come in, even if it's French or Latin.
Nothing, yeah.
Kids who've had six years of language study.
Yeah.
So that will be interesting.
Somebody to keep an eye on, maybe.
Yeah, no, I'm interested to see how that works out, too.
This is sort of looking ahead, but do you foresee being able to address the possibility that students will become now language lovers, and they may say, start French in sixth grade, and then they hit high school, and they're like, ooh, I can continue French, but do they potentially do two languages?
You know, I used to tell all my students, take two languages in high school. And then I found through, my oldest, who did that all the way through here, was it makes the electives, it makes it really tight. Like, by senior year, if you haven't gotten all your electives out of the way, you might find yourself bumped out of some other courses you really want to take. So it's not a question, they, so many students would love to take two languages already. Many would. And some do for a year or two. The problem is, the electives requirement makes it really hard. If you counted a second language as an elective, we would have tons of people taking a second language. That's.
Because that's just, it makes them excited.
Yes, no, I mean, that's, I've always wished we could make that easier for kids to take two languages, because they can only gain from adding languages. Yes, I was a zealot on that one.
I had a question about the FLESS program. Is that curriculum the same at Chikering and at Pine Hill?
Yes.
It's for sale for a lot of months, other districts.
Are there other districts that are doing something like this similar, or?
Like our program? No. There are press programs, and there are a lot of schools that they started recently. We had a lot of visitors from different districts that they are studying the program. But we are very lucky, I have to say, because they have it once a week, maybe twice a week. And it's, they just can't do what we can do.
I saw it, I saw it in the Wax Museum last week, two weeks ago, when some of them started with Spanish to do their presentation to the folks that came to go watch, so I thought it was fantastic.
And Laura's been asked to speak at multiple conferences about the program, and everybody's in awe, including our middle school teachers. So, and our high school teams are a little nervous, but they're warming up.
And I would say Laura is, as we say in Latin, sui generis. She is, yeah, she's really, this program, we're really excited to inherit.
Well, thank you, ladies. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moving on, now we have the superintendent's report, Dr. Kyo.
Yes, so Dover and Sherburne know that I did not conclude a report last night and haven't with the regional committee, because I figured it made more sense to just do that this evening, and while I had all three committees at once. So just very quickly, I hope you've had a chance to hear from people, or participate in, or see the graduation, which was absolutely amazing. We had a beautiful evening on Thursday night. The kids were fabulous. I still hear over and over about the president of the class, Danny Bennett's, speech from memory, which was quite impressive. The performances by the kids, the musical performances, just the whole evening was really special, and it was nice to be part of that. So I want to congratulate our students from the class of 2019. There were 150 students graduating, so it's about middle of the road from Dover Sherburne, I would say. There have been times when we've been pushing close to 200, and times when we were well below 150, so it was a great night. So I wanted to also highlight the work being done on the Start Times Task Force, the Phase Two of the Start Times Task Force. When we met last, it was April 30th, that was the evening, actually, that we made the decision to move forward with a change to our start times in the fall of 2020. So, you know, as we discussed, now is when kind of the rubber hits the road. And for our newer members, you know, it was one thing to make a decision to change our start times, but there's still a lot of kind of groundwork that needs to be laid, and that was the, that was the main rationale for waiting a year before going to implementation. So the Start Times Task Force has really morphed into a Phase Two, which consists of six working groups. And the Start Times Task Force is really the steering committee for those working groups. And I've explained in your, in my report, that we have key people from the original process, and people who have been knowledgeable about this all the way through, heading up those, those working groups. So the key areas as we see it are transportation and traffic. We know that, that changing the start times could have an impact on our schools' drop-off and pickups. We know for sure that, that we want to have our elementary start times as close to eight o'clock as possible. So we're working diligently and darn naturally as the person who's leading that group. We're working diligently with Connolly Bus Company to, to try to shorten our regional runs. That's the key. If the regional runs can be shortened in any way, we would be more likely to be able to start that, those elementary times closer to eight o'clock. So that work continues. I don't know if there's anything you would add on that? I don't know if there's anything you would add on that, Dawn?
No, we're just waiting for them to get this year finished, and we are generating our bus, our list of students by street earlier than normal so that we can get started as early as possible.
One of the things that we were hoping to do is, quite honestly, is perhaps have some of those adjustments in place for...
Next year.
For next year. Again, this is all about this transition. It would be preferable if we could ease into it, work some of these things out along the way. So that's obviously an important group. We have a group that's looking at staff implications, and by that we mean, how is this going to impact our staff? We've heard from teachers along the way in our surveys that some of, for that, some of them, there'll be childcare challenges. For some of them, they prefer the model where they come in earlier and provide extra help for kids. We don't want to lose coaches. We don't want to have things that hinder the extra help that's available to kids. So we really want to kind of hone in and hear from faculty about what they see as the key implications and work as hard as we can to address as many of those as we can. So Steve Robleski, our assistant headmaster in the middle school, will lead that up. Secondary before and after-school programming and elementary before, during, and after-school programming are two different working groups, but both looking at the same issues. They just apply differently. The before and after-school programming as it exists now is predominantly things like DEDA and CEDA, the extended day programs in Dover and in Sherburne. Perhaps BOX could be taken into, factored into that under our current model. Some folks do BOX early in the morning at Chicagor and Pine Hill. What does this mean if we change those times? Would there be less opportunities before school for elementary kids, but more opportunities after school for elementary kids? So that's really the, at the elementary level, that's kind of the, the emphasis of their work. And at the secondary level, they're starting later, and that is because we want the kids to get more sleep. I mean, that's the whole rationale. But the question is, does that mean there's never anything before school, ever? Some systems that have made this change have actually built one day into their cycle that before-school activities could take place, extra help, service, service trips. For example, Jim Baruti's trip to the Pine Street Inn is a Friday morning, I believe it's a Friday morning trip, and it's beloved. It's part of our culture. So does this mean we're not going to allow something like that to happen? So these things have to be worked out, but they need to be really worked out at the level at which they're applied. And so, so those two committees are obviously very important. I'm excited personally about some of the after-school opportunities for the younger kids. I think that there are a million possibilities there, and I'd like to see it develop in such a way that the people who are on the ground, who know what kids know, like and need, kind of get the chance to weigh in rather than us say. There will be a robotics program on Monday. There will be, I think it would be nice if people kind of generated those ideas and we heard from people about what's important to them. So I think this is going to be actually a really exciting process. And then the secondary school schedules, Scott Kellet and Ann Keegan are going to work together on that, and with obvious reason, and Scott is here this evening. The high school and middle school schedules do not currently align, and there are a host of issues that come out of that. One big problem that's been discussed here for years and years and years is the fact that we share cafeteria. And making the schedules sync up in such a way that kids have lunches at a reasonable hour, and we still don't lose those things that are culturally important to the schools such as breaks, after, the after-lunch break that they implemented this year in the middle school, these things, the H-block in the middle school, these things have been important kind of components of our schools and of our culture, the way we do business. So we want to make sure that whatever kind of schedules we develop to accommodate these things work. We'd like, we'd like to kind of get a twofer. You're always looking for two for one, or maybe three for one. If we could find a way to make these schedules work and solve a problem that's an age-old problem for us in terms of sharing staff, but also accommodate some of those other, address some of those other challenges, that would be a very good thing. So I'm looking forward to, to hearing from that group. And then, and then communications. Amanda Brown and apparent Sarah Wilson have agreed to kind of head up the communications component of all this. So Amanda's been really very good at that. If you've been to the Start Times webpage, a great deal of that is her work. All through the initial process, she was kind of making sure things got up there with some input from Michael, who's also kind of an on-the-ball kind of person in terms of making sure people get information. But we have a really good team there and feel that the plan is good. What we know we need to do is make sure that our working groups are doing the things that, that they have in front of them. It's tough because we started this in May, and those of you who know schools and work around schools know that June is a really tough time to start focusing on something. So we want to keep, keep that momentum going. We have made it clear to all of the groups that we invite them and encourage them to work through the summer when they have time, not to live at the school on this one thing, but to take advantage of opportunities when we're together or when the school is open to see if there are chances for us to kind of work through some of that without all the other distractions of the regular day. Summer can be a great time for planning. So as I mentioned in there, we'll obviously continue that work in the fall. And I've listed the members of the committee and, but I'm asking that you consider when you do your subcommittee assignments, that if, if you would factor in these, these needs at the various levels for representation from school committees, that would be awesome. The other thing I wanted to just mention is that there has, oh, yeah, in, in October, we plan to report out to the joint school committees on the progress that's been made. And I mentioned kind of more specifics about that, so if you have any questions about that, just let me know. Finally, with regard to start times, there is interest in conducting a study because Dover, Sherburne is, is moving forward and it's not moving forward this September, it's moving forward a year from now. There is interest. Chuck Seisler, who's done a lot of the work on sleep times nationally and internationally and is situated at Harvard Medical School and is a resident from these towns or from Sherburne, has expressed interest in potentially conducting a study. I have a meeting with folks who could be maybe involved in that, so I would just keep you apprised as that proceeds. Obviously, any kind of studies are voluntary, so, and I think Harvard understands that quite well. So I feel pretty good about that, but I want to know more. Is there a cost associated with it, for who? So we just want to know more, but I do see it as an opportunity to find out scientifically what, what the impact has been on our kids, so, so that has potential. I also wanted to bring you up to speed on MEKO transportation because that was a conversation that we had also on the 30th. There are concerns about our making sure that, that our Boston students are not left out of the discussion on ensuring that our kids are getting enough sleep. Currently, our Boston students are getting up at 5:30, and some of them don't start school until 8:30. So that just doesn't make a lot of sense. So for that reason, and at the, kind of, with the encouragement of many of you, we have, in fact, put out an RFP, an RFP, request for proposals as we go out for our bus bidding for our Boston students, indicating that we'd like two possible options. One with two buses in the morning and one in the afternoon, and one with the same as we have it now, the one bus. So we, we don't know how that's going to play out, but we're hoping that, we're hoping that we can come up with something that helps to address our issue. We, the contract is a five-year contract, is that right? The three plus two?
Two-year extension.
Yes, three plus an optional two-year extension, so that's fairly typical. Obviously, year one would be different because our start times are as-is than year two, but it might be nice to try and get this implemented for this coming fall. So there's a lot of balls up in the air. We just, we basically...
It'd really be the same, it's just who drives on which bus.
Who, who rides on which bus?
Right.
Yes.
Who rides on each bus in the morning.
Yeah, but it's, but it's different times and there could be costs associated with it.
Slightly, like, not all.
Are those separate contracts now? They're not, they're not coordinated by MEKO?
It's all managed by MEKO.
Right.
In fact, MEKO's the one that put out the RFPs.
Right, so that's still the same.
The next go-around, though, it will be on the individual school districts. This is the last time.
This is the last time that it's... Has, has there been any, any conversation around maybe other sharing with, like, a Natick or with, yeah?
Yeah, Monique was actually just at a meeting this morning, actually, and there's conversations. Natick is going to be adding an elementary MEKO program. There's interest also from Westwood and possibly Sharon.
There's some, maybe potential opportunities there alternatively? Great. Logistically, I mean, Westwood is, is right along our line. A lot, you know, if their elementary kids are starting earlier than ours, that might actually work for us. So it's, but it's, it's really up for Monique to kind of look into that, to see what the possibilities are. So everything's on the table in this whole process. Everything has to be on the table. We're not quick to dismiss things. We want to investigate and make sure that we're not leaving any stones unturned. So that's the, that's the start time update and the MEKO transportation. Just for the committees, you know, I know the subcommittee assignments would traditionally be set sort of before our September sort of reboot for next year. Would you want these subcommittee members sooner than that, if there's going to be any work done over the summer? I think it would be helpful to know that. Thank you for bringing that up. That would actually be a huge help if we knew. Some of them are going to be more active than others in the summer. Okay, so we'll get our volunteers that come from Dover and Sherburne and the region and then respond back to you? Yeah, or to Cheryl and she'll let us know, but that would be great. I say to you, I mean Cheryl.
Are there, do we have milestone dates of when, so you talked about this October presentation, after that period, when is there a time that we need to have this plan in place? So we're all comfortable that we're good to go come September 2020?
So that's how I see the October meeting, is that's actually where we would start to establish what's been addressed and what remains and what has cost implications, because October is really when we start to kick off our budget conversations, October and November. And so one of the things that the committees were concerned about is, you know, how much would this cost? And, and are there cost implications? For example, if there were additional elementary programs added after school, would they be fee-based? Would they be something that the schools would incur? Stipended positions? All of that kind of needs to be hashed out, and we hope to have some, the majority of that fleshed out in October. But that said, October comes quickly in the school year, comes really quickly. What we do know is that all of our budgets are absolutely finalized in, is it March? So, you know, in that window, whatever's lingering out there has to be resolved. So I can't imagine that there would be anything yet to be straightened out come March. I just, I would think that if it's not all resolved by March, that would be a surprise. That said, I did notice in the local Wayland paper, which Debbie Dixon sent along to me that they were, the superintendent was discussing, what was it?
Child care.
Child care, yes, after, after-school care. And that was June, so I was surprised. So, and their implementations this September. So there are things that will still have to be worked out because there's a certain sequence of when we ask people if they're going to register for after-school or before-school care. For example, you don't send out that request in November, say, do you, are you going to need before or after-school care next year? But what we should have established is what those models will look like. Are there half-day or half, or shortened tiered programs in our after-school programming? Is it, is it one fits size fits all? You sign up and you're there till 6:30? Could you, you know, get smaller increments of time? So that stuff should be worked out, but you'll still be hearing more about, like, those programs as we're coming into May and June, because that's when we would ask people to sign up.
Has there been any discussion about adding a late bus to the elementary schools like we have at the middle school now? I'm just curious with the shift in time, if there were these shorter after-school programs?
We actually got that comment in today.
Of course.
And so that, yes, yeah, and so that's certainly... Did you send it? And it wasn't from you. But, yeah, and, and all of those comments that come in are, are then disseminated out, so Dawn hasn't received that yet, although she might already be thinking about that, but she'll be getting that, and that's one for her to kind of...
Think about.
Think about, yeah. That's, that's a classic example of something that might evolve out of this process, and, and I think that would be a good thing.
I would also add, in addition to budget timeline, we're also mindful that families need to make arrangements for childcare, both families of our students and families of our staff. And sometimes those require really long lead times, especially for the younger kids. So I think that, that's on our minds.
Yeah, it is, and the transportation issues right now are our highest priority because we know that, that our elementary start times are actually hinging on that. And we need to get that established and finalized so that families do know what time school's going to start officially. Right now, as it was voted, was 7:50 at the elementary level, but we would, again, like to move closer to eight o'clock. So we should have that established pretty early in the year so that people know.
Right, just remember for the new members that our bus contract actually goes, we're in our last year, next year, so we have to go out. The RFP usually goes out in January, so we would need all our requirements in that document to be released in January, so things like additional late buses, changes in other requirements, we need to know, like, basically November-ish so that we can start incorporating them to the RFP.
So if I, if I can, I'd like to move along.
Just one, really, this is like two seconds. I encourage those who are on the task force to please continue to reach out to the community and see if people want to become involved or have interest. The more buy-in we get from the more people, the better it will all go. Not just now, because a lot of people won't, but maybe in September and then maybe again in October, just get as many people as possible.
And to that end, keep your eyes out for a Twitter account, which is coming soon, as soon as we find a name that isn't already taken. So we'll push that out and send regular updates and information and requests for questions.
But more than just updates and information, which is great, but people, some people who really want to be involved, they'll still gloss over when they see that. It's not just giving out the information, it's allowing people to participate in the process.
Yeah.
Whenever and however possible. Thank you.
So if it's okay, I'm, the reorganization information, Debbie and Kate McCarthy are here, so I'll let them talk to that when we get to special education, if that's okay, because I know we have about 20 minutes left and still fairly sizable.
So that leads us to our next one, which is the Special Education Department update. So I just want to...
Yeah, so if it's all right with the committees, I'd love for Debbie and Kate to kind of just bring us up to speed on where we are. We've done this reorg, I'll bring you up to speed. We've done this reorg, we did that special ed review. We went through the process of hiring Kate, which has been wonderful, and she and Debbie are just going to say a few quick words about how that's gone. about how that's gone.
Can we have Kate have a little one in?
My nine-week-old is home and she's doing great. Claire Elizabeth McCarthy. And her little, her big brother is just like, he's found his calling by being a big brother. He's very good, he's three and a half years old now. Yes, I look a little different to the people that are here in March. I had a baby two weeks after. Being here, I thought I had a month, but I had two weeks. But yeah, so that was, yeah, it feels like forever ago, but thank you for having me back.
So, thank you for having us. This is a very short presentation, I only have four slides. But we wanted to update you on what's transpired since Kate was hired in March. And we've been very busy and communicating since that time, often daily, through email, through texts, through phone and in person. So, we've had a lot of time that we've spent together and we just wanted to update you on some of the activities that have occurred and update you a little bit and answering the questions that you have. So, the first thing that we wanted to update you on is some of the hiring. And first, we want to thank you for supporting some of the additional staff in the special ed department to address some of the areas that were addressed in the program review around increasing our autism support for our programming and for the SAL supports. So, Kate has been participating in many of the screenings of the applicants. We've actually, it's been quite funny, but this is a good thing. We've screened applicants separately and made our own lists and then compared the lists. And we've come up with the same names. And so, those are the folks who've come in. And then, we've agreed on top candidates and it works beautifully. So, it was...
Fantastic.
Yeah. It's been very, very nice. So, we've been able to hire, shortly after Kate was hired, we moved to work with on the elementary coordinator. And we're thrilled that we have a stellar candidate who I actually knew in a previous life. She was a preschool teacher in Sudbury. She has a background in autism. She's a BCBA by training. She worked as team chair, as an administrator, as an out-of-district coordinator, as a special educator and has a lot of experience and is, will be starting July 1st. And I think complements Kate's skillset background and rounds out the other candidate, a new position, which is the elementary team chair, whose background is more specific learning disabilities in elementary and elementary programming. So, I've called it the dream team. I think that we're, I'm so, so, so very excited about the team coming in and leading the special ed department. We've also hired the elementary lead teacher for the ASD program, which is called GOALS. And GOALS stands for Generalization of Academic Language and Social Skills. So, that's well on its way. The counselor for the middle school therapeutic learning center program has been hired. The BCBA for the, we're adding a BCBA for the, well, for the district, for all of the districts. So, we'll have two, is pending. We have somebody, they're meeting with Dr. Kio tomorrow, I believe. So, hopefully that will be finalized. High school psychologist is also pending. We have a candidate, interviews were just conducted today. Kate, as a psychologist...
Six interviews today.
Took the lead on that. And a candidate rose to the top there, so finalizing that. Middle school therapeutic learning center teacher, we're reopening that position because we had a candidate who declined. So, we're not settling and we're looking for the best person possible. It's an important position. And Kate will take the lead on that from moving forward. The two administrative assistants, we have one in-house candidate who'll continue on that's filled and then Kate will hire the second position. Thinking back to the program review that was conducted by Dorsey Early and Deb way back when, seems like eons ago. We've been able to accomplish a few of those tasks. There were some tasks that were for immediate action and they were simple tasks. I don't want to say anything was simple, but there were things that could be done right away. One of them was centralizing the IEP process and really channeling everything through the central office. And by default, we needed to do that because we had a retirement, one of the secretaries at the high school. We moved a secretary or an administrative assistant to central and we started it sooner than we anticipated. We were able to move most of the records to central. We purchased filing cabinets. We've developed systems to make it work pretty seamlessly to channel everything through central and it's working well. It was a change in working process for some of the buildings, but people got on board and it seems to be working well. We, I think there was a lot of discussion around the OTs and the occupational therapy, self-study and the belief that we were trying to reduce or cut or eliminate, which again, was not true. It was just a matter of looking at the numbers that existed that seemed high. So, we started with this self-study. We did a lot of talking this year. We did hire a consultant who has a specialty in OT. And the individual came in twice, worked with our OT group, had some very, I think, deep and healthy conversations with our OT group and started looking at data and having discussions about what's happening, what do we do? How do we do it? And we'll probably continue that into next year. And we've also, I think this is one of the bigger pieces, we've begun the process of developing consistent practices and processes among the schools in terms of just paperwork and processes and how we work with respect to special ed and IEPs. And that's just, there are many, many, many things that we need to continue on. Kate will continue to do that. But we've started that. Little things by creating a team drive where everyone can access information where it didn't exist before. So, folks were saying, well, under this director, we did it this way. And somebody else would say, under this director, we did it this way. But gee, I remember doing it this way. And my team chair saying, well, do it this way. So, that's where the inconsistencies surfaced. So, it depended on who they spoke with, who they remembered and what they wanted to do. Very, so there were lots of inconsistencies and that was picked up in the program review. So, now we have a team drive, which is part of our Google format. And it's like a filing cabinet and people can just go in and say, this is what we do with this, this is what we do with that. And it can be updated in real time with documents and processes and directions and instructions and forms, whatever they need, it would be there. So, it's, again, it's just at the beginning stages. But people have suggested that they appreciate that because they're looking for the direction and those forms. So, as I said, Kate and I have been working collaboratively since March. Very excited to have her here. And what we've talked about is that change takes time. And the first charge here is that Kate has needs to develop relationships. As she's come in and observed, listened and is meeting a lot of people. And I guess at this point, I want to turn it over to her.
Well, it's been very nice and I think almost, and I remember it coming up when I was here at the meeting was, how long are you going to stay somewhere? And I've talked to people about looking at Zillow almost every day at communities down here. But so that just was clear to me that people really want a voice that will remain for a lengthy amount of time. And they're a little nervous about what my voice is even going to be. So, I think what's been clear is really listening and getting to know people was, you know, number one. So, I've been down, I spent a half a day last week at both of the elementary schools, meeting with all of the staff, touring, and also just getting to meet with students and really getting into the buildings. And then this, yesterday, I did the same at the middle and the high school. And what's also been nice is I've been on all these hiring committees, so I've just gotten to know people through all of those just connections. And so, that's been what I've been able to do. It's been so nice that I have had this time to do that. But for all the people I can't see or see just in groups, I also sent out a survey just asking how people are thinking about my role, how people feel about the department, the school, the community. And I've gotten a great, I've gotten 30 responses already. And at this time of year, that's a lot. So, I was very excited about that. So, I've been looking through all of that. And I think one of the best parts is every time I come down or there's something that is happening, Deb and I will just debrief and we'll just, we'll talk about, you know, whether it's on the phone or at Market Basket, we will just bump into each other and start talking about things. So, it's been very nice to have Debbie's support and I just can't say enough about just the staff wanting to get to know me and build those relationships. And that's been a nice piece of my transition that I've luckily been able to do. I even brought Claire one day for an interview. She was sleeping the whole time. First impressions are great. So, she, so it's been nice because I've been able to take this time and be here. So, I'm excited.
So, in closing, I just want to thank you for letting, giving me a wonderful first year of retirement. I have truly appreciated the opportunity to work here. It's wonderful community, communities. And there's so much to offer and it's so exciting. I'm darned, I can't be here to do what Kate will. And there are so many wonderful opportunities that exist and the direction that the department has in terms of a student services focus is just so exciting. And it's, you're going to go great places. It's going to be great. Yeah.
Can I just follow on that? Debbie, on behalf of the district, honestly, there is no way we can possibly thank you enough for what you were able to do for us. The task was tall. You came in into the year, six weeks into the year, and really hit the ground running. You said you would. Some of us had doubts because it's such a tall order, but you did exactly what you said you were going to do. And I think, I believe I speak for everyone, not only in this room, but in this community. We are forever in your debt. It was, it was, it was great having you with us and we wish you the very best. And Kate, welcome aboard. Thank you for working so closely with Debbie as we make this transition. I think it's going to pay a big dividends for you and for our system. So, you guys have been terrific this spring, so thank you.
Thanks for your kind words. It's been, really, it's been so much fun. It's been great.
Thank you.
So, now we move on to a policy, the bullying policy and plan. This is the first read, so we don't have to vote on it. This is just to make sure that you've read through the bullying prohibition and the update. And also, there is a bullying investigation form. Has that always been?
There has been one, but it's actually been updated.
Updated, yes, because it was lengthy.
So, if I could, just very quickly, just to let you know that this process is actually mandated. We're supposed to do this every two years. And our target was April, so obviously, we did not meet it. But it is important that we do this. So, we want to be sure that people have an opportunity to provide us with feedback if they have questions or concerns about the policy or about the action plan. We did, in fact, run it through council and their recommended changes, you can see those in there. But otherwise, it's a pretty solid working document. So, the plan would be to approve it in its final form in, at our next joint meeting.
Yes. Judy? Yeah. It's a great, it's a great policy. I found, because this is what I do. I found many, I don't want to say many, but several little nits of things that need to be shored up. For example, there's a couple of gender pronouns that need to be fixed. I could, and I don't know in what, like, for example, in the policy itself, you call, you've changed the names from victim to target and offender to aggressor, but in the interview form, it reverts back to the old names. It's really stupid stuff like that. It's nothing, or let me rephrase that. It's nothing substantive, but it is important for the document to be clean and clear. What would you like me to do with these things? Would you like me to tell you them right now? Or do you want me to write it up and give it to...
How much do you charge an hour?
All my work for this district is free.
We'll double your salary.
Well, you'll have to double it because I've doubled the comments.
So, that's the point of this, right? For us to get the feedback and to compile that feedback into a finalized document that you'll get in advance of your next meeting so that you can see what, you know, where the changes were and...
Yeah, my suggestion is that Michael probably has a similar to mine and whoever else, I don't know if anybody, I need the lawyers on that. So, maybe we...
It's a double-edged sword having these lawyers in this committee.
Do you want us, how would you like us to do that? Should we get together?
Could we get the policy subcommittee together? I know that we'll have that from the region at least tonight and potentially the two locals could also...
That's a great idea.
Send to them, they can do all of that late work and then send it back to you. You can have Joan look at it.
That would be wonderful. And that's how it should be done. So, thank you for mentioning that. That's the right way.
So, as one general comment that's, it's specific to this, but I think it may be relevant to other things that come up is that these, when these come up as policies or pieces in the handbook, they kind of touch a lot of different things. And I think we end up having similar terms or similar issues addressed in different documents in different ways. And they're not, I don't know if there is a process to kind of do an audit, that maybe not the proper word, but look across when we have something that comes up. Okay, what else is touched by the bullying procedure? Do we have consistent language in our handbooks? Or are we defining bullying differently? Are we using a term harassment or sexual harassment that's not used in one or the other? Just to have that consistency across documents.
Well, those of you who've participated in a policy handbook review know just how complicated this is. It's a big undertaking because you're right. All of our policies are woven into our standard letters, our program of studies, our handbooks, our handbooks from Pine Hill, our handbooks from Chickering, our handbooks from the middle school and our handbooks from the high school. So, it's, but you're correct, it should be done. I don't know of the mechanism that people typically use to do that. I think you kind of have to be a real attorney. Just stickler to make sure that those, you're being consistent. So, I like the suggestion. I do sort of believe that that too, perhaps, is a conversation for the policy subcommittee because those are all de facto policies.
So, it has in the past been done by the policy subcommittee? And just sort of for an overview, especially for newer people, the policies tend to be more of an overview, they tend to be broader. And then, the practices are what are covered in the handbook. And so, the umbrella should be the policy and then the more specific practice should be in the handbook. And the policy subcommittee has looked at that in the past. Did it about five years ago, four, five years ago? The last time the policies were looked at.
Okay.
2012, they did a significant review of a complete set of policies.
It's a big undertaking. It is a big undertaking and it's usually done with the attorneys.
Yeah.
Or MASC.
Or MASC, MASC.
And so, is this a policy or is this the sort of guideline, overall practice manual? Because this is a very long policy.
This is both. This is the policy and the bullying prohibition document. And it's, it's a fair, I think, I believe this is the one that the MASC generated.
Yeah, it is.
It's based on Mass General Law. So, when the law changes, the bullying law went into effect, everyone scrambles to make sure that their policies are updated. The MASC, the Association of School Committees, typically forms a policy that people can use. And they may tweak it, but they usually run it through their legal counsel and then that becomes the policy. So, this was long because the requirements of the law were long. It was a, you remember, that was post... It was a, you remember that was post the, the loss of the child out in Western Mass. There was a lot of buzz in the, across the state and in the legislature. And so that, this is the formal policy, but this is the, the, the kind of the intervention plan.
Okay.
Prevention and intervention plan. And it's driven obviously by our policy.
Right.
And it's approved as, as by the school committees. So it does in fact become a policy, but hopefully it's consistent with this document. That's the key.
Yeah. I just didn't appreciate they were two separate documents. Perfect.
Yep.
Can I just put a, a thought out for the policy subcommittees? Judy, you mentioned pronouns. I don't know if you were just talking about consistency, but I'm noticing that there's binary pronouns.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was talking about. I'm totally with you on that.
Binary pronouns, especially since so much bullying happens around gender, gender nonconforming kids. So I think that's really important in terms of being inclusive.
Absolutely. I'm totally there with you.
Great. So thank you, policy subcommittee.
Okay. So we threw those and I guess Ann will send out the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee so that I know.
Yeah, I'll call it.
With the, with the plan of us voting this and you guys voting this in the fall.
Fall, that's right. We'll have it ready for the fall. Okay. So next we're moving on to the action plan update, your superintendent's goals.
Yes. So, you know, I'm trying to remain mindful of the time and we're not doing that well since we're three minutes over and there's still a little ways to go. So I, you know, I'm open to suggestions on how to go about this. One of the things that we wanted to do was to have my goals presented in the spring. That was important. And so I wanted to make sure they were developed and that they were consistent with our strategic plan. I went back to the model that I used in the past with the key actions and the benchmarks. So that you have, and I can talk about that briefly. I was going to really just try and highlight for the committee because I don't want it to fall off our radar, the action plan of the strategic plan. And I don't want to go bullet by bullet. I just want to highlight some, frankly, some of the accomplishments this year and some places where we still need a little work. I think I can do it pretty quickly. Does that work?
Yes.
All right. So innovative teaching and learning is, is a key category for us, obviously. You've heard Beth talk many times over about the, the innovation committee, the, the work to develop the portrait of a graduate. The, the committee itself was eighty some odd strong? Eighty, eighty people on the innovation committee?
Sixty.
Sixty, okay. Sixty people. The, that has been a big undertaking. Change is hard, as Debbie pointed out. So it's been, that's been one of our challenges. This takes time. We're trying to change some mindsets and sometimes there's resistance. But the, the, the innovation committee's work has been amazing. The professional development options and opportunities that we've provided for our faculty, I think, have increased. This was a concern when I came here. I heard a lot of concerns about professional development and I believe that that has gotten much better. The RTI work and the, the work on differentiation has really started to take hold. That's a big foundational block of our teaching. We need to make sure that we're assessing where our kids are along the way and providing kind of directed interventions and supports. So all of this ties in very closely to, to Beth's work with the innovation committee. The transition of FLESS was a big, big goal of ours, which we've completed. You can see on the right hand column, we have the progress. We're, we're trying to use even the terms from mindsets, you know, completed, in progress and not yet. So last night with the Dover and Sherburne school committees, Beth talked about Tony Wagner's F-word and meaning no longer failing, but, but not yet. And how did he describe it? Tell me one more time.
A, B, and incomplete because you're not there yet. You're not at the A or B level.
So, so that's where we are on innovative teaching and learning. The secure and safe schools, I feel like we made a lot of progress on that and I think you know that, but just to recap, we did do our security audit. We had an outside organization conduct the audit. They also provided training for our faculty. The, the feedback from the faculty was consistently positive because they felt like it was needed and was in a long time coming. So that was a positive. And we've reinstituted the emergency response team for the district, looked at our policies, not our policies, but our emergency procedures in that regard and worked closely with the police on, on develop, making sure that our handbook that we use and share with our teachers is current and practical. Our teachers have, have also were, have been asking that we do something about our facilities, particularly up here at the region. They are concerned about the, the open campus feel. Parents have expressed concern about that and we did in fact make those changes this year. So that's, that's big progress. If anyone who's come to the school during the day knows now that you need to buzz in. And actually John, headmaster John Smith and Scott Kellett, headmaster at the middle school, were hugely instrumental in making that happen. So I thank you guys for that. In terms of resource efficiency, I don't want to, to harp on this too long, but the special education review was a big undertaking for this district. That was a big deal. We made it, we made it through it. It was done and it was done well. It was great participation and we've got a real strong roadmap, map for Kate moving forward and Naomi, the special education coordinator. So I feel really good about that. I also feel obviously good about the reorg itself. So those are very positive things. I also want to highlight that one of our important goals was in fact to look at our special ed programming and where possible revisit our, our approaches and consider if possible, keeping students in-house if we could and if it was in the best interest of the students. And we were able to do that. So that's a really positive development. And then strengthening partnerships with families in the community. I, I don't really want to go down too far on that road. I will say that we still have work to do. There's still work to do and you can see that on this sheet. So I just mainly wanted to make sure that you saw that and that you know that we as the leadership team, look at this document. It is our guiding document and that's as it should be. The strategic plan itself is, it's beautiful, but this is kind of, this is our working document. And actually I gave you one with just in progress or completed or not yet in that right hand column. We actually look at one differently as the team as to where we are in the three years. So I do feel as if strengthening partnerships with families in the community, I talked about this in my own self eval, that our communication subcommittee work still needs to be done. There needs to be some work done with our website, but we, we tackled a lot this year and our teachers deserve and our administrators deserve a ton of credit because it was a lot. And you could throw in start times. That social emotional wellbeing or health and wellbeing of our case is also an obvious priority. So we've made good progress, but I just wanted to give you that update on that piece.
All right.
How long did it take then?
That was quick. Very good. All right.
And then my, my goals, just quickly. Obviously the transition for the start times is a priority. That's my first goal. You can see the actions and the benchmarks and kind of, which, I try to write these in such a way that you can look at it and see which indicators. You just went through the evaluation process with me. So this is, should be helpful to you because now you can see each standard and the indicators. So I try to highlight which ones this goal speaks to. The, the second goal is a district improvement goal. So there are three different kinds of goals, right? The district improvement goal, the professional practice goal and the student, the, a student learning goal. So the second goal was the, the task force goal that I mentioned, the communications task force that I mentioned before. I want to make sure that that gets back up and running. It's not to say that we did not make any progress, we just didn't make the progress we had hoped for. But I feel good about that going into next year. Ensure a smooth transition to the student services model and oversee the implementation of the goals outlined in the special education review. That's obviously very important. We spent a lot of time and energy on that special education review. We want to make sure that we're doing the things that it suggested we do because we agreed with the suggestions. They were good recommendations. And the delicate part, as Debbie pointed out, is how do you, as a new person, come in and implement those changes without shaking it up too quickly? It's a, it's a process because some of these asks are big. So just because it's done and we have those goals in front of us and a, and a roadmap in front of us, does not mean that I'm going to suggest to Kate McCarthy, get it all done by October because that will not work. She has to spend a lot of time on the relationship building and the communication and developing kind of a comfort zone with her people. So unfortunately that takes time, but, but she gets it and I'm confident that that will work out well. My fourth goal was related to my prof, my professional practice goal. That really doesn't change. I'm not going back to school for my second doctorate. So I'm really trying to just continue the connections with experienced and veteran administrators. My relationship with my coach, Strong Matt King, he's a, he was an excellent principal and longtime superintendent. Is also very much involved in the new superintendent induction program and coaches new superintendents. So I have been working with him continually, continue to participate in job alike meetings. So I feel that's important. I do need to get to conferences every once in a while and find him to stay current. So that's an important goal for me. And then my fifth goal is really, again, related to ensuring that Beth has the tools that she needs to maintain this momentum about, around enhancing the learning experiences for our kids. Now that's, that too is a big ask. Dover Sherburne's a really successful school system. So for someone to say, there are things you could do differently that might even be better for our kids. That's a big ask. It takes, it takes lots of conversation and explanation and I think you've done a good job with that, Beth, but I want to continue to support her and our principals so that we never lose sight of the goals that are outlined in the strategic plan around innovative teaching and learning. So those are the goals and my key actions and benchmarks and, and I'm open to suggestions and they can be made now or offline, whatever works for you guys.
All right. Thank you to Dr. Kio. So next we're going to move on to the food service lunch increase item. Dawn?
As we're closing the circle, I first presented this at your April joint meeting and then we talked about it in each of the individual school committee meetings. I apologize to the new people, which is why I include the memo that went out in April to so you can sort of catch yourself up a little bit. But we are tonight asking for a 25% increase in school lunches or 10%, or a 10 cent increase in milk. That's a same price increase for each of the three districts, so the motion can be the same. But we are bringing that forward for approval. See my schedule.
Are there any questions before we proceed? You can see also, for those who are new, she did like a comparison with the other local districts. So we're in line. So that being said, do I hear a motion? I guess the motion should be to increase the price for lunch for 25 cents and price for milk by 10 cents for both Chicering, Pine Hill, Middle School and High School.
Dover Sherburne, each committee needs to make that.
Dover, do I have a motion? Rachel, second it. Leslie, thank you.
Sherburne, do I hear a motion to increase?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
We don't do that. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sherburne, go next. Region, region go next.
We don't have anyone, so should I still do it?
No. She, she doesn't. So she doesn't have anybody?
No, she just means that they don't really have a chair. Yeah.
Ah.
They haven't, they haven't met yet.
Should I do it and should I just do it anyway?
I, I can do it.
Why don't you do it?
Okay. From the region, is there a motion to accept the price increase?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion went over. Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Thank you.
Any discussion for Sherburne? All in favor?
Any discussion for the region? All in favor?
Thank you. This will be very helpful to the program. I'll let you know and we shall communicate that to parents.
All right. And next up is the building fee increase.
Right. So as you, as you can see, I tried to show that both these are in line with the strategic plan. So we are using the strategic plan as our, as our roadmap. Our plan though was to do a complete review of our building rental policies, procedures and fees, but as you can tell, we have a lot of other higher priorities. But one thing that I do feel strongly about bringing forward tonight for implementation next year is an increase in what we charge outside groups for our custodial services. We couldn't actually see where the last time we'd increased, but I know over my time of eight years, we have not. So it clearly is time to do it because of our, the, our salaries of our custodial are actually in most of positions losing a little bit of money, although we're still have the building rental fees that are offsetting that. So we're not, we're not losing money, but we're not sort of gaining what we hope. So I'm requesting a increase in our weekday Saturday, Saturday hourly rate to $40 from 35 and on the Sunday holiday hourly rate from 45 to $55. And I did give you some indication that outside groups who come in on weeknights are charged. It's just when we have to specifically have a custodian here for their event is when we charge groups because that's not our goal to raise, you know, to, to make money off this is to serve the community, but we need to also be in a position where we're covering our costs.
Okay. So that being said, Dover?
Dover, do we have a motion to increase our weekday and Saturday hourly rate from $35 to 40 and our Sunday holiday rate from 45 to $50, $55? Do we have a motion from Dover? Brooke, second. Rachel, thank you.
Sherburne, do I hear the same motion to increase from $35 to $40 for weekday and Saturday and from 45 to 55 for Sunday and holiday hourly rate? Amanda, second. Mike, fix Cheryl.
And at the region, do I hear a motion to?
It's a shame motion.
Okay. Same, same motion that you just heard? Is there a?
Motion, second.
I moved and second.
Second.
Thank you.
Dover, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Sherburne, any discussion? All in favor?
Region, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
So consent agenda, was there a revised draft over there? Is that what I'm seeing?
I just had to know that mine wasn't included in the first, so it's on my phone. I don't know if anyone else has the same situation, so I apologize. That's the only change of the thing.
Okay. So that's it?
Yeah.
All right.
This was what we sent?
Yes.
Brooke, same. Just having to bring it up in the meeting tonight, even though she already brought it up in the meeting tonight.
Well, it's not substantive, but we didn't say anything.
And I'm letting it just deliver.
All right. So.
Dover, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as provided in the updated package? Motion?
Can I ask a question? Just to be clear, you know, Ann, the draft schedule of our meetings isn't part of that.
No, it's in the communication.
Okay, good.
Dover, do I have a motion?
It's important.
Rachel, second. Leslie?
Sherburne, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Megan, second. Nancy?
And at the region, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Sherburne, any discussion? All in favor?
At the region, any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Finally, for the member information, the 2019-2020 meeting schedule draft that is in your packet.
As I'm pursuing drawn plans, channeling my inner Claire, for the Union 50 reorg, which was done at the beginning for the chair and the secretary, Dover and Sherburne.
for the chair and the secretary, Dover and Sherburne are the, are the, there's three members from each committee on that? The chair and the secretary, which were both voted last night, but I don't know who the third members were.
There's three for each, each group. They haven't done their appointments yet.
Okay, so should I do the four? Does everybody know how that works?
Well, it's essentially six. So they only know two. So I don't know.
They know four of the six. So each local, their chair and their secretary who voted last night, so that's two each, which is four, which is a quorum, which is good.
So it's enough.
Right. So just leave the, just do it as a.
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily have to be in a chair, it's usually a three plus senior people.
Right, and if, so if that is the, the, if that's the procedure, Amanda is, there's only three of us remaining who are senior because we have two new. So it would be me, Megan Page and Amanda Brown. Okay.
And Amy from Dover, it's going to be Brooke, myself and Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. So we don't need to do anything with this, just?
Just do one thing.
We do need to do one thing?
On the calendar, yeah, we need to, the Tuesday, October 8th, at sundown is Yom Kippur. And so we can't have a meeting on Tuesday, October 8th for the region.
Sorry about that.
Oh, please, it's fine.
Well, it got by us, but we, we can get that straightened out, so.
It's going to be to Monday.
Thanks for checking.
Probably to Monday?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
For Dover, if we notice anything that sticks out in terms of schedule, just let me know. Otherwise, we just need to make sure we have a quorum at all meetings, but if there's something that more few people have a conflict for that you know right now, which might be a challenge, just let me know because we can change this.
Same with Sherburne, so take a look at it and let me know before we, okay?
So look at Dover and look at the joint, look at the Sherburne, look at the joint, look at the region, look at the joint.
Yep.
Okay.
And usually the chairs talk about it.
If the meeting can, the schedule does kind of morph as the year goes on and things pop up. But it's a good thing to just put in your calendar ahead of time so then you know.
Yeah.
And hopefully you can kind of work around those meetings.
Right.
Yep, Phil, we're probably going to destroy this, we have to decide things for the district.
So we adjourn and adjourn and adjourn. Should I have to do a motion?
Are these joint school committee and Union 50 meetings, are these the negotiating sessions?
No, those are. Those will be additive.
Okay.
Those are extra.
I just, I didn't see this on our agenda from last year, so that was on our schedule from last year.
Now the, that will be in addition, extra credit.
Extra credit? Okay, so. Okay, so now we're going to poll to adjourn because we have to move into executive session.
Not to, not to return.
Not to return. Thank you, to open session. So what do I do?
It's individual, a rod.
Right, so. All right.
For Dover, I have a poll to move into executive session. Rachel, Leslie, Mark, Brooke, yes, thank you.
And for Sherburne to poll to move into executive session, Megan? Yes, Mike?
Yes.
Amanda? And Nancy? Okay, and me.
And the region, poll to go into executive session?
Audits, or you say yes?
Yes, you can say it loud.
Ann? Yes, Michael?
Yes.
Kate? Yes, and Nancy?
And no.
Sorry, Lynn, sorry.
Do you have to say it audibly?
Yes.
Then we go to executive session.
All right, now we can go to executive session, thank you. Kate keeps thinking she's with Sherburne.
Me too, sorry Kate, I'm sorry.